7.6, Discussion and Consideration of Administration of the Jail Medical Contract. And with that, we have Sheriff Martin here.
Bringing this agenda item to the Board of Supervisors to outline some goings-on that's been going on surrounding this contract and to request some direction be provided to county staff. As you know, the jail medical services have been provided at the county jail by way of contracts since 1995. I found the agenda item from December of 1995 during which the Health Department requested the contract be in place to provide jail medical services. Prior to that, it appears that jail medical services were provided by county staff with the public health officer acting as the responsible physician and public health nursing staff being tasked with the job of clinical services out there. We have a legal obligation to provide county medical services to our incarcerated population, and those costs are borne by the county, the laws surrounding that, in addition to a whole bunch of case law decisions that have come down, but include Title 15 of the California Code of Regulations and Penal Code Section 4023. Shortly after the Health Services Director was appointed to his position, myself and members of the jail command staff met with him in January to discuss several things. One of those things was discuss this contract, this very contract, because we were aware that the contract was set to expire at the end of June of this year, and we wanted to give him some advance notice that it would likely need to be renewed and that a bid process would probably be recommended so that we can get the best medical services available for our dollar. In speaking with the Health Services Director, he indicated that he couldn't find a bid proposal or request for proposal from the previous administration, and in doing some research, I found that the previous or the current contract that's in place had requested, had undergone the process to request a waiver from the bidding process that was granted by the Board of Supervisors in 2019. The justification to waive the bidding process during that presentation was due to the unique nature of goods or services that were received by way of this contract. I would disagree with that assessment. I don't, I would propose that the services aren't unique. This has nothing to do with the current Health Services Director, but I was able, with a quick search and just based on my knowledge of the services performed by various companies, I was able to come up with a list of eight similar companies that provide the same services throughout the country and here in California, and certainly a good use of public taxpayer dollars is found when we go through this bidding process. On April 28th, after my meeting with the Health Services Director, I received an email from Director Portney informing them that he had reached out to Well Path. By this time, April had rolled around, and we were coming up close on the expiration of the contract, and I hadn't seen anything, any requests for proposals put out, nothing on the board agenda to renew this contract. And of course, this contract is a very essential public service that needs to continue without interruption so that we can provide medical services to our staff or inmates housed at the jail. On April 28th, I received the email from Director Portney indicating that he'd reached out to Well Path representative for a six-month extension, and in that email, he also indicated that he did not intend to renew that contract, rather place it in a suitable controller's hands. That led to several discussions, both with members of my staff and Health Services Department and myself, about who the suitable controller might be if it's not to be the Health Services Director. Administration, crafting of a request for proposal for a contract of this nature requiring specialized services is not something that anybody in my department has the skillset, the knowledge, or the background to do, and not to mention the fact that the reason that we're contracting in the first place is because the Health Department requested that contract to be put in place in 1995. Additionally, adequate oversight for administration of this contract is necessary, and there is nobody in the sheriff's office that has any skill or ability or knowledge to determine what is adequate administration of medical services at the jail other than what's in compliance with Title 15, which is the bare minimum, and I don't think it's fair to have sheriff's office staff oversee that contract. Over the next period of time, I heard several comments from staff as well as from the Health Services Director directly indicating that he had several reasons for not wanting to administer the contract, some of those reasons including there not being enough return on the investment for the services that were provided by way of this contract, that he didn't get paid to do this, and that he wasn't legally required to administer the contract. I'd like to touch on a couple of those. I found those comments a little bit concerning. As far as the return on investment, this is a service that we provide. We're not in the business of profiting off of any services that we provide, particularly in the jail medical. It's an obligation that we have. People that are incarcerated generally are there involuntarily, don't want to be there, and we have a legal obligation to provide those services. While it is highly burdensome amount of money to be spending, it's simply something that we're required to do. As far as being paid to do this, this is something that the Health Department asked for. Granted, not the current administration, but the Health Department asked for this back in 1995, and it's been the duty of the Health Services Director ever since that time continuously to administer the contract. As far as not being legally required to do this, he's correct that there is no legal requirement that the Health Services Department administer this contract, and I don't know that there's any legal requirement that contracting services be provided for anything, and we as public servants do lots of things that we're legally required to do and lots of things that we aren't legally required to do because it satisfies some obligations that the county overall has in carrying out its functions. Shortly after that, on May 23rd, I received another email from Director Portney indicating he had negotiated a six-month contract extension on the current contract and that after six months, there would be no more funding in his budget to support that contract. I didn't see anything on the board agenda, and it left me wondering what authority this was being taken under, if there had been some decisions that were made that I wasn't aware of that would change drastically the method by which we provide these required medical services to our inmates. The county ordinance is fairly clear on who has authority and what to do. Of course, the board ultimately has authority on what to do. The county ordinance designates the position of the county purchasing agent, and it designates, which is the CIO, and it designates assistant purchasing agents as all department heads. The county ordinance is clear on what the duties of the county purchasing agent are, and one of those duties is to assign the assistant purchasing agent's responsibility to assist in the performance of various duties related to procuring, securing bids, and administering contracts and services for our county. I think the decision to no longer administer this is likely outside the authority of the Health Services Director and lies within the authority of the county purchasing agent, or alternatively, with a decision of this magnitude likely should be made at the Board of Supervisors level. This contract, as your board, I'm sure, is well aware from many discussions, the provision of medical, adequate medical health services that are in compliance with the law, in compliance with certain case court decisions that have come out over the years is one of great concern as far as liability goes with the county. Administration, this contract has additional impacts on other departments in addition to the sheriff's office, most notably behavioral health, because a lot of behavioral health services are included with the service of this contract. Ultimately, by function of the contract and by function of the law, the responsible physician for the medical facility has ultimate decisions on all those decisions, whether they're medical or behavioral health in nature, but certainly the contributions that the behavioral health department makes are something to be considered as well when deciding who's going to administer this contract or whether or not there will actually be a contract in place at all. Again, these are decisions that likely need to be made at the board level. I had informed the Health Services Director by way of email that these services aren't optional, that the county is the contracting entity, and it's overall, it's the county's obligation to provide those medical services in the best way possible. I had heard from the Health Services Administration that there's other counties that do this different ways throughout the state. He's absolutely right. There are other counties that do this different ways, and I'll tell you that just because somebody else does it different doesn't mean that we're doing it wrong. There's models all the way from Siskiyou County who, by way of the Health Services Agency up there, has staff providing medical services at the jail, to departments that run it as ours where it's either county administration or some other entity that administers the contract, and there's also other counties where the Health Services Department administers the contract. What I will tell you is that in doing a quick research of what it looks like in counties where the sheriff's office administers these contracts, it didn't take me long to find a 2015 grand jury report from the county of Santa Cruz in which the grand jury found exactly the type of issues that I'm talking about right here, that administration of this type of contract by the sheriff's office is, I will say, the grand jury investigation came after there was a series of, I believe, four or five in custody deaths that occurred within two years after the sheriff's office administering the contract that was provided by Well Path. And that's not to say that that was the reason those deaths incurred, but they certainly felt it necessary to mention that in their grand jury report. And what they found was that that sheriff's office in Santa Cruz County, which I'm sure is much more well-staffed and has probably a lot more resources than we do here in Lake County, lacked anybody in their staff that had any expertise or necessary experience or knowledge to adequately oversee this contract and ensure that there was adequate provision of medical services. Under Lake County policy, Section 7, item, Section 1 of Section 7, designates the responsible department head for contracts, and the reading of that county policy is that the head of a county department, agency, special district commission, or committee which requests consulting or contract services which are subject to this policy is identified as the responsible department head. I would say, I would propose to the board that, based on the fact that in 1995, the Health Services Department requested this contract for medical services be provided, that that responsibility carried on through the years and continue to this day, and that if there's a decision to be made, that it's going to be somewhere else, that that decision not be made by an appointed department head, that it be made by the Board of Supervisors. What I'm here to ask for today is for the board to provide direction to county staff on a couple of things. The first question that we need to have answered is, are we going to continue with a contract providing jail medical services? We can certainly go back to the way that we did before 1995 and have county employees provide such medical services. That's certainly allowable, and it would meet our obligations. My opinion on that is I think that's not the best idea, probably the worst idea out of all those, given the nature and the increase in requirements of medical services, not to mention the upcoming requirements that CalAim programs are going to take on jail medical services within the facility effective in January of next year, or that the board provide direction and identify which department is going to be responsible for administering this contract and carrying out all the tasks that go along with crafting a request for proposal, crafting a request for contract. Certainly, the sheriff's office will be glad to assist whichever department that may be, but in any event, this can't sit around for another six months and have us at the end of the year trying to figure out what we're going to do for jail medical services. So that is my request of the board today.
Are there any questions for Sheriff before I ask Director Portney? He has his hands up. Director Portney, I see you have your hand up. If you can unmute, I'd like to see if you would weigh in on this.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for having me. Thank you, Sheriff, for your input on the matter. If I could try to address some of those points, they're most likely will not be in order, but I'll give it a shot. So, we have a contract here with Well Path, which was potentially formerly known as California Forensic Medical Group. This contract agreement has been from July 1st, 2019, to June 30th, 2020. Per law, we are supposed to, every three years, go out to RFP for a new service provision regarding jail medical services. That three-year term is up to date, so it's about that time. So when I say that we're not going to renew our original contract is true. I can't renew the original contract because the original contract is void because we have to go out to RFP. So the sheriff is right there. I would like to look at a couple of points in this RFP. The sheriff is correct. The county is to ensure that said medical services are performed, rendered in a professional, competent, and efficient manner, in an efficient and satisfactory manner. That's where the sheriff gets the opportunity to twice annually request that the public health officer do annual inspection. Going to another point, the California Forensic Medical Group, which is known as Well Path, agrees to update, maintain policies, procedures, in partnership with the sheriff's department, manuals, whatnot, to ensure that everything regarding patient care for their inmates is up to par in their facility. Going to another point, that the reason why we contract a service like this is because an organization like Well Path hires and maintains a medical director, a director of psychiatry, and they're responsible to ensure the quality and healthcare provision within the county jail facility and provide clinical supervision to mid-level practitioners and the staff who are providing services within the jail. Now, you may be curious, what kind of services do they provide? We contracted them because they provide full scope service, and what I mean by full scope service is medical health, behavioral health, and other services. And when you look at other services, you know, it touches on aspects of social services, et cetera, but the medical health and behavioral health far exceed any ability that we have as a county to be able to provide this service. So in short, I would say that this contract and this service is vital, and I appreciate the taxpayer and the Board of Supervisors for letting the Health Department and the county at large pursue this opportunity for our inmates. Now, getting back to the point, I can't renew the contract because it's up for RFP, so we have to find, establish a new contract with a different agency or establish a new contract with our current agency. Now, when it comes to renewal of our current contract, that's impossible because it's going to be void here at the end of June 30th. We did get a six-month extension, but that's only going to go to six months, and after the six months, again, we're going to have to go to RFP. So when I say that we're not going to renew the contract, that's true. We're not going to renew the original contract because we have to establish a new one. We did get an extension with a 5.19% increase due to the 8% inflation that we're experiencing right now, and that's going to help cover any additional costs. And to my last point, the Health Department is stuck in a precarious situation here because when it comes to wraparound services involving the sheriff's department, and there's expectations in here that the sheriff's department are supposed to be held accountable to along with behavioral health and social services, whatever, different departments. So this contract and the Health Services Department holding it forces us to hold our peers accountable to work being done inside the jail, both on potential entry and exit. As peers to these agencies, it puts us in an interesting situation to hold a certain accountability that I feel is outside of our wheelhouse, and I think it takes a higher authority to be able to hold accountable goals, objectives, outcomes, to reduce reveticism on our jails, to make our county a little bit healthier and safer. That's my feedback regarding those points, and if there's any clarification needed, I'd be happy. Oh, actually, the last thing is, considering this is, we are a self-funded department, Health Services, and taking into account the inflated rate that Well Path is needing to continue service, I can't negotiate a new contract with taxpayer dollar, right? So I'm unable to negotiate a new contract at an inflated rate because I'm a self-funded department and I don't have a grant or funding to cover those inflated costs, so that would need to come to the board for consideration. I think that's my final point. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions for either?
Oh, Stephen, yes. Stephen, I see you on. If you can give us some insight on this as well.
Well, I'm here more for questions than anything else. But the funding for this is currently for '22, '23, 80% general fund, a little over $2.4 million.
Stephen? Oh, no, go ahead. Sorry.
And behavioral health does put in some of their realignment to the tune of about Public health used to put in some of their realignment of $404,000, and then also realignment 2011 from CCP would put in about $450,000. So the bulk of this is general fund. Other than that, I'm more question and answer at this point.
All right. Thank you, Stephen. We're going to entertain a break real quick. Supervisor Spatia would like to see if you could take a break. So if we could take a five-minute break briefly, and we'll come back to this once we're finished. We are back. All right. So welcome back from the break, and so we were just finishing up with a statement by Stephen. It looks like, I'll have Todd Metcalf, Director Metcalf, he has his hand up, and once he's finished, I'll come to you.
Thank you.
Director Metcalf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank Sheriff Martin and Director Portney for their input here, and I just want to say this contract is vitally important. It was mentioned that there is a behavioral health component to it, and I do contribute to this contract, as Stephen Carter mentioned, a little over $250,000 a year. If this contract were to go away, I don't have the staff capacity to fill in for the behavioral health part of it, and so I'm here to support this however my department can, though, you know, we don't have a lot of money either, but I just, I want to support this. We need this contract, whether it's with Well Path or whomever, but these services are vital to folks in the jail, and I'm just here to support it however I can, and I appreciate Director Portney at least getting an extension to this contract. That's great, and maybe that'll give us some time to figure out where we go from here. It sounds like this, well, considering the item that was just heard, yes, I'm very familiar about the RFP process and learning it myself, but I don't believe any, the departments that are involved in this, none of us have the capacity to take this on on our own, and I'm behavioral health. I don't do medical stuff, so I don't think my department could handle it, but if that's where it needs to land, okay, but I don't, and I know Sheriff Martin is referencing a very old, how far back was that? 1995? And, but it does, it still seems to me that the Health Services Department might be the best place for this to land, and I will support all of it as best I can because I can't, my department can't take on the behavioral health piece of it. I mean, we're doing some already, but I'll stop there. But thank you for that. This is a great conversation, but it's, this is pretty heavy, and we need to figure out where this is going. So again, thank you, Sheriff Martin and Director Portney, for entertaining this discussion.
Thank you, Director Metcalf. Supervisor Spatia?
Yeah, I have a few questions and then wanted to make an offer and a comment.
Should I let Crystal and Jonathan speak before, or did you want to?
I'd like to speak right now if possible. Mr. Portney, I just have a, Director Portney, I just have a quick question for you. You said there's an extension. Is that a six-month extension? Is that what I heard correctly, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I appreciate that, and has there been any initiation of an RFP, or this discussion is what helps us figure out where the RFP is supposed to originate from and what exactly we're asking for?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I think we have, we have six months right now.
Yes, clarification, yes, sir, to which question?
To the fact that we're waiting to make a decision on where the RFP comes from as far as which department and who's going to take the key role of leading that RFP process.
So there hasn't been an RFP started yet?
So, yes, that seems to be the case.
And this is, so I'd like to add comment on that. So, and part of this RFP process, the collaboration with behavioral health, and I don't want to throw social services in there because I'm pretty sure through the CalAim, they're going to have some part with exiting inmates for linkage as a service to reduce reveticism. So what I want to express is, in the contract that we currently have, care, coordination, and collaboration must be included in the sharing of information between providers essential to the provision of appropriate services and care. So what I would ideally like to see is one contract holder, but then MOUs between partnering agencies to identify what the scope of work is between agencies so it's actually trackable, and we have, we're able to actually identify what resources we have within our individual departments, and then be able to track our success in providing care both in and out of jail. Right now, we don't have that, so we don't know how we're contributing to the health of our inmate population or contributing to the lack of reveticism of our inmate population. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you for that. And so, jail medical is absolutely necessary. It's a mandate, basically. We have to provide the service. I think I can speak that we all can agree that the state of California doesn't exactly provide us with the resources necessary to be able to maintain the service need for the inmate population we have. We used to be a county jail of no more than one year. Now we're holding people for almost close to a decade. That is a whole different ballgame of what kind of medical requirements that is on a county, and all those changes that have happened in the state has just increased the R resources that are needed to make that possible. So I think that that's one of the reasons we keep seeing the increases and so on. I think this is a complex topic, especially, I appreciate Director Portney bringing up CalAim. That does create some potential changes, and I don't know that there's enough information today for us to say this is where it belongs, this is where it doesn't belong. What is necessary is that we have the contract and that we continue to provide those resources to our inmates, and what I would like to offer is, we had an ad hoc committee that was directly working with Director Portney. I would like to see if maybe that same committee can meet with the stakeholders and figure out what options can come back here, because right now, it's kind of like everything's on the table, and I'd like to have A, B, or C, or A, B, or just A, if there's only one direction to go, but I just feel that we need to have a more intimate conversation on how to come back with options for the board to review rather than what we have in front of us today. And so I believe that that committee was put together with Supervisor Pyska and Supervisor Scott. Not sure if those two are interested in that, but that would be the direction I would like to move forward so that we can come back with options rather than the grand open book of things that are happening.
I would love to serve on this committee, but I think it'd be best to pull another supervisor since I'm only going to be here for the next month and a half.
And I didn't want to be rude and suddenly do that to you.
Supervisor Pyska.
So as mentioned earlier, I do have some requirements, and my requirement is to ensure the provision of medical services within the facility. I don't think there's a whole plethora of options that are out there. I think the question that's before the board today is, do we continue with the contract or not, and if so, which department head is responsible for administering that contract? And that's all the guidance that I wanted. With the six-month contract, that only leaves us at six and a half months. It's going to take quite a bit of time. I think an ad hoc committee might be appropriate to help whichever department head is tasked with crafting the RFP. I think that's perfectly appropriate. I think that would be very valuable, but as far as a decision today, this isn't something that we should start off by kicking the can down the road. I think the decision needs to be made today on whether or not we're going to contract, if we're going to go back to the model that we had prior to 1995, or if we're going to continue to contract, which I would recommend that we continue to contract for many of the reasons that Director Portney stated as far as the services that are required exceeding the capacity of county staff, and simply designate today which department head's going to be responsible for administering this contract. And I think I've made it clear in my position that I don't think it's appropriate for the And I think I've made it clear on my position that I don't think it's appropriate for the sheriff's office to administer the contract.
So just to, if I could interject, to answer those points, I totally agree. Continuing a contract is going to be essential for jail medical services, keeping in mind that we do have to go to RFP for this service. So there's no doubt that contracting for this service is going to be beneficial and essential for all. So that answers point one. I think to point two, I would not mind having this be under the health services department as contract oversight, but I do need the autonomy and authority to be able to manage the contract accordingly. That would require MOUs between stakeholders to hold accountability to the work being done. So I think that, to me, that answers both of those questions, is we have the opportunity to either continue if they win the RFP process, WellPath, or get a different service provider. But at the end of the day, there needs to be accountability for the services being done and appropriate tracking of those. What I do know is that my individual budget, because I'm a self-funded department, I do not have the ability to pay out of pocket for these services. This is going to require a full-time staff member to manage this between partnering agencies through an MOU process, and I'm willing to take on that task. But it needs to be outlined clearly what the scope of work is and what the deliverables are between each agency.
And so I'm going to go ahead and open it up to Crystal, as she's had her hand up for quite some time, and then Stephen, I'll go to you. And then back to you.
Good afternoon, Board. Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, to outline what I think the Department of Social Services responsibility is in this, and we do have one, and that is determining eligibility for Med-Cal upon release, and that will continue in CalAim, but that is where, it is limited to that. And we'll continue doing that. I think that, you know, we're going to continue to partner with our county partners regardless of whether there is an MOU or not. That's how we work in this county, and you can expect that from social services and people.
All right. Thank you. Stephen?
I just wanted to, as quasi-purchasing agent, I just wanted to ask, I don't recall seeing the extension being on the board's agenda at any point. That's way past signature authority.
The extension, you said, is past signature authority?
The extension, I believe, is in the hands of the city council to be signed.
Or county council.
County council.
County council, sorry about that, yeah.
So it's in the works, and then to the board?
Correct.
Ms. Grant?
Yeah, the extension agreement was sent to me just last weekend. I signed off on it yesterday, although the language was interesting, but I signed off on it because it had legal merits, so it should be going back right away. So I would, if you don't mind, just remind everyone that the contract with CFMG, now WellPath, is with the County of Lake. So the administration of the contract and what that means to your board is something that your board would be considering. And I don't know that you have to be so top-heavy as to have MOUs between health services and these individual entities. What you may want to do is just clarify your board's expectations of all the individual departments that are involved in the contract and who's going to be doing what. But that's just a suggestion.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, so it sounds like the extension's coming to us soon, and we have the six months, and, you know, bringing back the ad hoc committee and working through what the scope and the expectations and the functions are going to be for the new contract. I don't think we have, and the funding, yeah, all of these moving parts. I think, you know, we'll only end up better if we do this work together now.
And so will the extension coming back, like, how soon is that? Probably in a week or two? Are you looking for something today?
I was hoping to come out of here with something today. Like I said, this is, the RFP that's going to have to go out, it's probably going to take several months to go over, and we get all these stakeholders together. I'm not opposed to these ad hoc committees, but there needs to be an entity that's designated with the responsibility for getting this going, and ultimately be responsible for the oversight of it. And as I said earlier, I value the oversight. I know there's a lot of talk about, you know, sheriffs don't want oversight, but I have no idea what goes into quality medical care. I know if, I don't like something my doctor does, but maybe that's the best thing for me to be done medically. I think it takes somebody or a department that's got the background and the knowledge to know what quality care looks like, and to oversee that type of contract and make sure that the services being provided under the contract are being overseen by somebody with the appropriate qualifications and skills. And again, I think time is of the essence. I would like to not see this get kicked down the road. It's the process for crafting an RFP, going out to bid process. This is a large contract. It's going to require a consultant selection panel to be put together and to review this, and then to work out any logistics should some other company win the bid. I have no idea. I'm not here to support or oppose WellPath one way or the other. This isn't the discussion for that. But the reality of it is, WellPath could continue to provide services, or it could be some other entity that can provide services, regardless of who it is. There's a lot that needs to be done between now and the expiration of the contract that probably shouldn't wait any longer.
Excuse me?
Yes, Ms. Grant, go ahead.
The only thing I would say is that since I've looked at the amendment, I can send a copy directly down to your board. It can be on for next week's agenda, and I believe that the CAO is prepared to move forward with an RFP, and that can also be explained to your board on next week's agenda. So it will move forward with alacrity.
Yes, we've already been working with health services on the RFP. We'd still need to meet with stakeholders to make sure the scope is as broad and unique as it, or discrete as it needs to be, but we will be providing that assistance as needed to move this forward.
Thank you, Susan, and thank you, Ms. Grant. And so I have...
Absolutely. It seems like, you know, we're moving in the way we need to. So we got the extension coming. We're going to set up the ad hoc committee, and we'll get an RFP out.
I think we're on the same page there. Supervisor Spatia?
I'm offering to be on the committee if that is something the rest of the board approves of.
Yeah, I think we'll bring it back next week, because we didn't talk about the ad hoc on the...
You're right.
So we'll add that to that component.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah. We'll add the ad hoc component to that item, and that way, he can fill the Supervisor Scott's seats, and she's...
Or anyone else. Sharing my interest.
All right. And we can discuss that that day. So I think that's where we'll be moving forward on that. I don't know if I have to open it up to public, because I did not open it up to public.
I'm unclear. Is it in the board's inclination that county admin administer the contract?
No. What's happening is the next week, we'll come back with that, to move forward with that.
Okay.
Sir, I believe this is just to facilitate the RFP process, to move it forward quickly.
So if I can recap?
Yes.
There will be a contract brought to us next week for an extension. That contract, just like it is now, will be a contract with the County of Lake, with scopes of services as to what is expected to be done within the contract. There's a scope of service in every contract.
Nothing will be changed because the amendment is only as a term.
Of course, but there's a scope of service that already exists.
Exactly.
That will be amended for timeline, but not amended for changes for scope of service. Also, there will be a conversation about the RFP process where we are, as well as the new composition for the committee to meet. That way, we do not kick the can down the road. We are proactively, now that this has been brought to us, moving to get that resolved and understanding what are the stakeholders' roles, where is the funding coming from, and all of the other stuff that we've discussed. That way, we can make sure that as we create a new contract with post-RFP, that it's exactly the kind of contract that is going to benefit all of us. Just wanted to recap. Is that correct?
That's what I thought, but I think you're asking who obtains responsibility. Is it...
Which department head's going to be tasked with the oversight of the administration of the contract?
I would suggest that at this moment in time, if we're extending it at this six-month process, that it continues as it has, where public health services remains in the same role they were. The sheriff department, the jail staff remain in the same role that they were. WellPath in the same role that they were.
For the extension of the contract?
Yes.
Are we making a decision today on going forward, or is that going to come at a later time?
I think the RFP process will be crafted with the way moving forward.
Jonathan, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Supervisors. You know, just to maybe even contribute to any, limiting any further confusion, I don't necessarily mind managing the contract, but what I do need support in is clarity and accountability for the contract, and the ability to have the proper authority to execute the contract accordingly. When it comes to rules, expectations of this contract, to be quite frank, they're not being fully met. And so when I do ask questions, comments, or need information from partnering agencies, either internal or external, I get that with full support from the board and partnering agencies. That would be my request, and I'd be more than happy and willing to serve our partnering agencies and our inmate population and contributing to their health. But I need the ability to do my job in managing the contract. Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
I just think that our request can be accommodated with the ad hoc committee, the RFP. I think we're going to get clarification on everything. I completely agree with, you know, we got the six-month extension. This board has not changed anything. It'll go forward as is, and then we'll have the deeper conversation when the RFP comes through and we have our next agenda item. That's what I'm leaving with today.
I will open up the public. Don't see anybody in the chambers. Anybody online that's in attendance that would like to have a comment on item 7.6? All right. With that, I'll bring you back to the board, and it looks like we have direction for next week.
Yep.
And we'll make sure that that's taken care of next week. Thank you, Sheriff Martin. Thank you, Jonathan Portney. Thank you, Todd Metcalf, and thank you, Crystal Markatan. And Stephen. Thank you, Stephen.
Take care, Stephen.